The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery and filing of this notice on January 12, 2024. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier-News and Taff into Warren and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I do agents in the firing of the United States of America in a super republic or which extends one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever to be.
Mr. Higgin.
I'll call the roll. Mr. DeSey. Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Malfetta.
Yes.
Mr. Otto.
Yes.
Mr. Valentino.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 10 4-11 permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss material the disclosure of which constitutes an unwarranted invasion of individual privacy, specific prospective or current employees, unless all could be adversely effective request an open session and a matter involving the purchase, lease or acquisition of real property with public funds. Action will be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meetings is anticipated to be approximately 30 minutes and be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
You have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstain? The Board is now in executive session. Thank you.
We're going to go to the room where our table committee.
All in favor? Abstain? Oppose? Okay, back in public session.
Yep, resolved, Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the July 22, 2024 board meeting.
Do we have seconds?
Second.
Wait just a second to take notes here. All right, this is on the minutes. Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Malfetta?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Correspondence and information, Dr. Mingle.
Just one thing to report here, the board received one email in support of the revised cell phone policy, which is on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome to the August Board of Education meeting and the beginning of the 24-25 school year. Now, this is a time of year where we get an opportunity to thank a lot of people that got us through the summer and are preparing for us to start the new year. I had the opportunity to extend a thank you on behalf of the Board of Education to all of the individuals that work for buildings and grounds and transportation. Without them, our buildings would not be ready to be occupied by our staff and our students. They do an amazing job both during the summer and during the school year. And just thanks, huge thanks to our transportation department who got the bus routes out to everybody and getting us ready to start the school year. Tomorrow will be the first day that teachers return in full, and I'll be extending a thank you to them tomorrow morning as well. And in the spirit of thanks, Ms. Keller had an opportunity to speak to some of our new teachers. Ms. Keller, would you like to welcome?
Sure, I actually forgot I was going to do this, so I will, I will wing it. No, it was lovely. It was very nice to meet all the new staff members and employees who are joining. I spoke a little bit about the adjustment I had coming to Warren, both from a resident standpoint and as a joining the school district, and kind of shared some stories there and just told them that, you know, they made a decision to come here. And it's always hard making that choice if it was the start of their career or changing jobs. And so that we were grateful for them to choose coming here, and I'm sure they won't regret it. And we just wanted to welcome them.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. We do want to welcome everyone back and looking forward to a great school year. Item C5 tonight, I want to extend congratulations to the 17 staff members that have earned the right to a movement on the salary guide through their continuing education. We're very grateful for the quality of teachers that we have here and the efforts that they continually make in their own development that serves all of our community. On the 14th of August, the board received the resignation of board member Natalie Feigtbaum. Very sorry to see any board member leave, very sorry to see Natalie leave. And we want to take a moment, although she couldn't be with us tonight, to honor her in the form of a resolution of appreciation, which I am going to read now. Whereas Mrs. Natalie Feigtbaum has served the children and community of Warren Township as a Board of Education member for one and a half years. And whereas Mrs. Feigtbaum has served the board as a member of the Curriculum and Technology Committee and the Personnel, Negotiations and Communications Committee. And whereas Mrs. Feigtbaum has served the board as its representative to the New Jersey School Board's Delegate Assembly and to the Watchon Hills Regional High School Shared Services Regionalization Advisory Committee. And whereas Mrs. Feigtbaum has established in the teaching staff, parent community and administrative team a reputation of trustworthiness, fairness and commitment to the district's high standards. And whereas Mrs. Feigtbaum has served as a champion for excellence in all areas with particular attention to providing the resources necessary to support the district's growth. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Warren Township Board of Education on behalf of the entire Warren community does hereby extend its sincere thanks and gratitude to Mrs. Feigtbaum for her service to the children of Warren and does hereby wish her all the best in all of her future endeavors. Mrs. Feigtbaum's resignation does open up a seat on the Board of Education. The seat that will be filled is the balance of Ms. Feigtbaum's term. That is the remaining 2024 calendar as well as the entire year of 2025. This is because it's late enough in the year that there's no part of her term which will appear on the November ballot. So a candidate wishing to serve on the Board of Education through the application process to fill this seat should be prepared to be in that position for at least 15 months. As every member who's ever been on the Board of Education currently and past knows, it is a weighty decision to make. We work pretty hard, but if this is an opportunity, I think I would certainly recommend to anybody who feels strongly about quality of education in Warren. So this is the process. If you are interested in sitting on the Board of Education and fulfilling the term, the seat vacated by Ms. Feigtbaum, you should submit a resume and cover letter in which you outline the reasons for wanting to be on the board and the qualifications for being selected. The resume and cover letter are due at the board office by or on September 10. September 10th, at the end of business, being the last opportunity to submit those resumes. Anybody who submits those resumes and cover letters seeking this position should plan to appear at the September 16th Board of Education meeting, where an interview will be conducted. Each candidate will be provided with the opportunity to make a brief, five-minute maximum statement that elaborates on the resume and cover statement, reasons for wanting to serve, qualifications, expectations for service, areas of priority. As board president, I will pose a series of questions to each candidate on behalf of the board, and then the board will adjourn to executive session for discussion. The appointment will happen that evening. When we return from executive session, an individual will be appointed to serve and will take their seat on the board immediately at that meeting. So I do hope that we have great interest. Again, I, I think it's obvious, I think this is important work. And we have a lot of talent in the community that the board could really benefit from. So that is the end of my comments. Dr. Mingle, Superintendent, Mr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mrs. Zahn. We are excited to welcome our staff back to the school district tomorrow. All of our K-8 students on Thursday and all of our preschool students next Tuesday, right after Labor Day for preschool. I'll provide a more complete picture of the demographics of the opening of school at the September meeting, which has become sort of a tradition here. But as of last Thursday, and these numbers are already out of date because we've had people registering since then. As of last Thursday, we had 1,625 students, which is a few lower than last year, which was expected because our incoming kindergarten class is much smaller than our outgoing eighth grade class. So although there's growth across first through eighth grade, that kindergarten class didn't make up for eighth grade. However, there are 101 students living in developments at addresses that didn't exist five years ago. 19 students living in a development that only began issuing certificates of occupancy this month. And we anticipate many more students coming in the next few months during this school year. I'll provide a little bit more information about that next time. But we're very excited to welcome 1,625 students plus to our schools later this week.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. We do not have a presentation or discussion on the agenda for tonight. So moving on to committee reports, the Curriculum and Technology Committee, Mr. Tor.
Thank you, I actually have two to report back on. So June 10, we met and Mr. Kim ran us through the IREDDI results. The only thing really to say from there is that I think there were no concerns or red flags that came up. There was a discussion about district providing interventions. And again, everything that was needed was being done, so we were very comfortable with that. We also reviewed the strategic plan results, and as I recall, when it was June 10, we're on track there. And so with all the milestones we're supposed to be hitting at this point, it's all happening. The only real, I think, significant update from that meeting was that it was regarding Chromebooks, which for kindergarten are not seen as critical in fact, potentially a hindrance to the children's progress in that phase of their education. So they are not being issued this year to children. And there's an ongoing discussion, but no recommendation or decision regarding preschool. So, so in August, we also met on the 10th. Mr. Kim ran us through key changes to math and English language arts, the curriculum. The probably the important things to say is the biggest, biggest changes I believe are, I recall, are kindergarten, first grade, and all the teachers are comfortable and happy and supportive. So no issue there. Probably important to mention, it was full representation across the, from all of the district schools. And I believe there were two from each school, I think, that were involved in this and they sat on the Oval Committee. They also were the authors of the, of the changes to the curriculum. So it was the people using this with the best insights as to, as to how best to structure that they were actually writing this and are involved in rolling it out. So again, nothing, nothing problematic there. And there's a recommendation to the people that are working on that things tonight. Okay, the other item on here is the cell phone policy. And I think somebody mentioned earlier, we have our inbound on that, an email of support. The key changes to be aware of are really five. So removing teacher discretion on utilization, increase the mandate for confiscation from may confiscate to will confiscate or shall confiscate. A requirement for parents, guardians or emergency contacts to retrieve the, to be contacted, retrieve the devices. It includes smartwatches and other devices beyond cell phones and move the allowance for use of devices during emergencies. Now, I should, should mention that for the middle school, this is an annual change. So this is something I think can be placed at some time. Here's a change for the, for the elementary schools. But again, we're recommending approval, approval of that policy or change for the elementary schools. There was, the only other thing of note is there was a discussion about the expansion of preschool program. But really, our discussion was very prominent, it was pros, cons. And it's any further discussion within the curriculum committee is really pending the discussion with you guys in the finance committee as to what's really achieved. There were pros, there were cons, and general interest in landing. But pending approval, the section is a finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Tor. The Finance Operations and Security Committee met August 19. We were joined by the Um, we were um joined by the district's architects and Director of Operations for the district for a uh robust conversation regarding district growth and future space and development needs within the district. Um, as has been mentioned a few times in the past board meetings and with readouts, both the Miss Committee and other committees. Um, the district is moving in the direction of meeting a pre-K full um universal pre-K program need uh as well as addressing the needs that are arising out of the continuing growth within our community. Uh, those can, those conversations are ongoing and more information on that will be available at future time. The committee also approved a timeline for an RFP for council to the board. And um I'm gonna take a second here because we had a, we had a moment where we were able to praise our BA who um has been investing funds for the district and earned uh about eight hundred thousand dollars in investment revenue for the year of twenty twenty-four. That's well done. And uh, that's the kind of um aggressive attention to um investment that is uh allowing the district to meet unexpected expenses and to keep us all um being the very best school district available anywhere. And it's particularly good because we were advised that um the projections for the district's health plan for the year twenty twenty-five are expected to increase uh by double digits. Uh, we're looking at uh potentially as much as thirteen percent increase. And uh in addressing that, the um Business Office is going to be looking for um claims history and potentially shopping insurance providers. That was the end of that meeting. Personnel, negotiations and communications. Ms. Keller.
We met on August twenty-second. Uh, we had two items to discuss. We talked about an adjustment to the school business administrator contract and discussed the timeline for the superintendent performance evaluation in twenty twenty-five. And that was the, the only agenda items.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Keller. Also, Ms. Keller, uh, the Ad-Hoc Strategic Planning Committee.
So we met on June tenth and June eleventh uh to hear the final presentations from two potential partners to lead the strategic planning work. Uh, we subsequently decided to move forward with Comegno Education, which the board approved at the July meeting. And this is to help with facilitation and documentation of a new strategic plan, which is one of the goals for the next year, which is agenda, as part of Agenda Item A two uh on the uh agenda for approval tonight. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Keller. That concludes committee reports. We will now move into the first opportunity for public commentary. Uh, this is the first of two opportunities. I ask that anyone interested in addressing the board, please raise their hand or use the Raise Your Hand feature on Zoom. Each speaker is asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address and by directing your comments to the presiding officer. Please know that the Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Public commentary is intended as an opportunity for the board to receive such input, but is not intended as a Q and A session. Following public commentary, if appropriate, the presiding officer or the superintendent will provide some response. For this first opportunity, we ask that your comments be limited to items that appear on tonight's agenda. There will be a second comment opportunity for all other comments later in the meeting. So at this time, looking to the audience, which I do not have an audience, so moving directly on to Zoom. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to address the board on agenda items? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to close the first public commentary?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The first public commentary opportunity is closed. Dr. Mingle, do you have any comments on items for board consideration?
I do have a, just a few. Uh, item A seven, which is the curriculum approval. Uh, thank you to Mr. Kim and all the staff who contributed to the curriculum revision process there. B two and B three, which is extraordinary aid for twenty-three, four acceptance and allocation. I just wanted to point out that thanks to the work of Mr. Hegel, our Director of Special Services, Mrs. Lang, and our staff in the Business Office, our extraordinary aid allocation is about ten percent higher than it was the previous year due to their efforts. Uh, B five, this is all, this is the kind of thing you'll see now as, as streets come online. We add them to our zoning maps. So again, more information coming down the road for that. B six, we've already sent a letter home to the applicable families, but we are happy to be able to offer a handful of seats for a fee-based transportation to our general education tuition preschool program. Uh, we wanted to make sure we had enough seats for all of the students we are obligated to transport before offering that, but we are able to offer a handful of seats on a first come, first served basis at this point. C sixteen, I want to reiterate what Mrs. Zahn said and thank you, Mrs. Feigtbaum, for her service to the Board of Education. And then finally, D one, which is the, it has a long name, but that's the cell phone policy that um Mr. Tor reported out on. Just to reiterate what he said, this expands on our existing ban of the use of cell phones and other electronic devices during the school day. I will send a letter home to all parents tomorrow afternoon, giving more information about that so that we're all ready for the first day of school on Thursday. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Mingle. Does any board member have any items on board consideration that they wish to call for separate load or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Keller.
Motion to move items for board consideration, A one through A seven. And A eight, as it reads, resolve that the Board of Education affirms the recommendation of the superintendent and the special board subcommittee regarding student six-two-two-two oh three and approves the attached resolution. Uh, items B one through B seven, C one through C nineteen and D one through D three.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Hegel.
I will call the roll on the consent agenda. Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Malfetta?
Yes.
Mr. Tor?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Right, the motions carry five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Hegel. Um, we do have unfinished business from our July meeting. Um, so we're just gonna go down those one at a time. The first item that um was carried to this board is the board retreat item, uh, board self-evaluation and goal setting. Um, I'm going to recommend that we've tabled that further to the next meeting when um hopefully we will have a uh greater percentage of our board members present and a new board member. So um I'm gonna make a motion to table that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. I don't think so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? All right, so the board retreat item is carried. Um, moving on to the next item, which is the election calendar. Um, you'll bear with me. I'll give a little bit of history on uh this item. Traditionally, in the past, up till about two thousand and ten, um, the election of Board of Education members took place in April, not in November. Also on that ballot in April was the board's budget. Uh, budgets were always submitted to the um voters to be voted upon. In two thousand and ten, under the administration of Chris Christie, there were a lot of changes made, including the concept of um being able to um approve budgets without going to the voters as long as they met certain criteria, um, including no more than a two percent increase on property taxes um and then a limit on defined waivers um and adjustments. At the same time that that happened, um, districts were told that if they wished to avail themselves of passing budgets without going to the voters, then they were required to move their elections of board members to November. And for obvious reasons, most districts did that. In January of this year, um, the governor signed legislation that gives the option back to boards of education whether or not they wish to have their board elections in April or November without consequence to the budgeting process. Uh, so we're putting that out here for at least an initial conversation to see whether or not the board has an interest in that. Among the benefits um experienced in the past by having an April election of board members was that it more closely aligns to the academic year. And so rather than seating new board members in January when the district is deeply in the budgeting process, um, we would get through the budgeting process before having a change in board members. Um, so at, with that um brief background, um, I'm gonna open it up to conversation with the board.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, I think the budget has benefit and I also think things like superintendent evaluation. It's just when you have that staggered, if it doesn't align with the school year, you don't get to see those full, you know, the full school year experience because I'm assuming, when would the term, when did the terms then start? It's an April election for a what?
May is, I think, typically when the new members were sworn in. Uh, one consequence doesn't bother me, but I'll mention it. It would result in every currently sitting board member would have their terms shortened um by about seven months as we roll over to a new election date. So anybody whose term currently expires at the end of next year would have a term expiring in May instead of in June, in December.
I do think it aligns more with the school year.
Yes.
And it makes sense. Um, because I, as a new, as one of the newer board members, I, I remember saying, okay, I'm really just inheriting what somebody else already had agreed to. So I think there's a greater uh opportunity for impact if you come on kind of at the end of the school year and preparing for the following year.
It would be at our cost, but I don't believe the cost of holding an election is all that high. We've done this in the past for referendums. Chris, do you, do you have any idea roughly what we spend on that?
Not offhand, but I, I don't, I don't believe you should let that get in the way of you have this decision.
Fair enough.
I mean, at this point, um, you're paying for two things. Uh, you're paying for the staff to run the election, then you're paying for the space to have the elections. And now a lot of that space is here, so we'd be just paying ourselves in those cases, so.
Um, yeah.
I wouldn't want to interfere.
Typically a low turnout election, so. If um the board agrees that this is something we wish to pursue, um, then I would uh ask our administration to look into the timeframe and whether or not we can get this on the April election in twenty twenty-five. If we're gonna do it, if that's something that the board believes is beneficial and they want to move on it, then I think we move on it expeditiously.
Does it disagree? Is it consistent across other districts and, or other? No?
No, um, I'm not aware um of any other district having made the decision to move back to April. Um, that's not to say that they won't. This is fairly new um legislation. Um, so I, I really couldn't say. I will say that this has come up um before the boards of Long Hill and the, and the high school. Um, I believe also Watchon. I watched their board meetings and it, but it's come up very tangentially and in passing and, and none of them seemed moved to act upon it or move on it further.
We're definitely gonna get less voters in May than we will November.
I think that's.
I don't know, that, that doesn't drive my decision, but I think if it's not coupled with uh governmental elections, you'll see lower turnout for this. Maybe those people are more dedicated, I don't know. But I do like the separation of our board election from anything political.
That is a benefit. And I will say that um if you go back a couple decades and look, you're not gonna find it very often. It was a competitive race. So whether it's in November or it's in April, um, we have three seats this November and three candidates. If you were doing that in April, it'd be the same.
Yep.
Three, so I'm not sure it matters how many people show up if there's not a choice.
True.
So. So we are at form. We can direct the administration to proceed to identify what the process is for this and then put it on the next board meeting as an item to do the full presentation and approval on. Is that appropriate, gentlemen?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, we direct. Okay. Um, okay, thank you. Um, any further comment on that, folks? Nope, okay, moving on. Uh, one other unfinished piece of business relates to district policy zero-one-four-five, uh, board member resignation and removal. There is a um language here that I'm going to propose. Uh, we modify slightly. If you agree, then this would appear modified for a first reading at the next meeting. Um, so this would be the second full body, which currently reads, "A member who fails to attend three consecutive meetings of the board without good cause may be removed from office." And I am proposing that it reads, "A member who fails to attend in person three consecutive meetings of the board without good cause may be removed from office" on the affirmative votes of the remaining board members. Um, we um approved a year ago, be a little more than a year ago, um, Zoom access for board members. And this does not disrupt that. Um, but we would like to see board members actually at least once every three meetings appear in person. Um, we don't want a situation where somebody is on the board and they, every third meeting dial in on Zoom and we never have the opportunity to benefit from actually interacting with that particular board member. So that's the, that's the modification I'm proposing. Again, "A board member who fails to attend, insert the words 'in person' three consecutive meetings without good cause may be removed." If, um, so I open that to conversation and uh see what you think of that.
Uh, just so I'm clear.
Yes.
Okay, you're, you're stating that board members need to attend three meetings in a row. Is that what you're saying here?
Yes, in person.
In person.
Yeah, well, they can't miss three consecutive meetings, so it's the opposite.
Okay.
You can't miss three consecutive meetings without having in person.
Got it.
And that dial-in and by Zoom doesn't cure that. Okay, all right then. Uh, that'll appear as um of modified for a first reading on the next agenda. Um, no other, there is no other unfinished business. Um, we have no new business for this evening, so we're moving on to the second opportunity for public commentary. Uh, this is the second opportunity for public commentary. It is open to any topic you wish to raise to the board's attention. Again, I ask that you raise your hand. We use the Raise Your Hand feature on Zoom. Remember that comments are limited to three minutes and please state your name and address before beginning. Looking to the room where there is nobody except Brenda. We love Brenda, but do you have anything to say, Brenda? No, okay. She's got nothing. Um, and moving then on to Zoom. Do we have anyone in our Zoom audience that would like to address the board on any topic? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to close second opportunity for public commentary?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The second opportunity for public commentary is now closed. Um, we will not be utilizing the second executive session and therefore.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
And, okay, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you, everyone.